... o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, October 24th. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnor and the Governing Body of all other Special Assessment and Taxing Districts, for which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Call this meeting to order. Kylie, would you take role, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Chair short.
I am here. Now if you would all join me in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now if you would all join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any introduction of new employees?
Yes, Chair, we have the Director of Health and Human Services here.
Good morning, Renell.
Good morning, Board. I am very happy to introduce our new Behavioral Health Program Manager, Megan McClellan.
Hi, my name is Megan. I grew up in the Crescent City area, moved away after high school, and I've been working in human services in the state of Oregon for about 15 years. And I'm excited to come and join Delnor County, so thank you.
Very good. Welcome, Megan. Thank you. Welcome back home.
And then I'd like to invite Program Manager Dorothy Wadlow to introduce a new employee in Public Assistance Branch.
Good morning, Board. Dorothy Wadlow from Public Assistance Employment Training Branch.
Good morning.
I'm very happy to introduce Paul Ronjoin. He's, uh, come over here. He's well-known throughout the community, but also he's a returnee for us. So he came back to us with seven years' experience, so jumped right in.
Paul, did you want to say a word?
Hello.
Hello. Yeah, Paul Ronjoin. Mostly know me as Doug. Got a few years in the Department before, left about a year ago for a few reasons, and happy to be back. I don't have to get, something I've noticed is I don't have to get to work too early in the morning now to get a good parking spot.
[laughing]
Got a lot of vacancies, so if anybody out there needs a job, applications online.
Thanks, Doug. Welcome back. Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, the Board unanimously voted to initiate two new pieces of litigation, and they will remain confidential until the filings actually take place.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda at this time? Is there any such items? Okay, seeing none. We'll receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the County Delnor Programs projects from Board members. Supervisor Starkey, want to kick us on?
I am going to forego that today. We have a packed agenda. I did report out on my Supervisor Facebook page, so if you want to see exactly what I've been doing for the last two weeks, you can do that. And if you need further explanation, please reach out. I'd love to chat with you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson, anything?
I, too, will pass for purposes of what we have going.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
No, agreed. Definitely a day we should forego it.
Thank you. And along those lines, I am going to remind people of the services today for Deputy Eschmal at 1:00 with a procession of emergency vehicles starting at noon. I'm sure all of us are desiring to attend that. I have confidence that we will finish this agenda prior to us needing to leave for that, but just to assure that we can do that, I am going to make a motion to set a fixed time to adjourn, and that would be 11:45. Do, can I get a second?
12:45 or 11:45?
11:45.
Oh.
The procession starts at noon.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was second one.
Yes, 11:45, so.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on the motion to fix time to adjourn? And just so everybody knows, if there are items on the agenda that don't get covered at this meeting, they will be passed on to the next meeting, so we will do our best to get through the business that is important to the county on the agenda. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back. Would you pull the vote? We just need a majority vote on this.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Is there any public comment on consent agenda items?
I read this current consent agenda this time and was astonished that I got all the way through number nine before the requested by Health and Human Services moniker appeared in which the entire rest of the consent agenda consists of items that Health and Human Services has requested to be put on the consent agenda. Since this current Board has been placed into office to rule on various items that are important to the county, it seems that this has become the pattern on the consent agenda for items that perhaps should be discussed more thoroughly, that occupy parts of the requests by the Health and Human Services Director, should be part of the general discussion in the, in the meeting, because very often we have no idea what we're talking about. It just simply gets passed in a five-to-zero fashion on the consent agenda, whether it's controversial or not. And it would appear that the consent agenda takes up a majority of the business of the Board of Supervisors every meeting in an increasingly regular fashion. I would hope that the consent agenda could be trimmed down significantly in the future, and that we don't simply rush into judgments that may affect the county in significant ways that have no value to the overall population. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. You all remember this health ordinance, probably, when Dr. Stutz said he was going to put people in jail. That's on today's consent agenda. Eighteen items on today's agenda for the consent. Like to start by discussing and take action to suspend the rule of order. It's going to be commonplace, huh? Is that what we're going to do now? Just suspend the rule of order? We'll visit that again later. Let's start with number one, don't approve the meeting minutes, because Mr. Howard is involved in a conflict of interest. And number two, and does personal business with Mr. Westbrook. You can't just allow continued conflicts of interest. You will all be conflicted. Number two, your proclamation for domestic violence awareness. Kind of gross, since Sartre County leads in the criminal activity and a lot of very poor statistics. Number four, Delnor County is in a state of perpetual emergencies, the fire. This is an opportunity for us. Maybe we can get that 199 done. We've, that's pretty much shovel-ready, right? What's delaying that? Perfect opportunity. Get it done. Three minutes, 18 items. Number seven, food and agriculture. I like the financing part. This agreement is funded by unclaimed gas tax funds, which are collected statewide. Maybe somebody pays those around here. You're spending it. Used to be our money. See, number 10, affordable housing and associates, limited liability, go figure. Through services, through all phases of construction. What construction project is it? What construction project is being contracted for employee tracking? What project?
Legacy.
Legacy. It's going to be completed by May 31st, 2024? It says, provide services during all phases of the project's construction. All phases. It's going to be done? Five months? Will it be started in five months? We have to keep paying for it. Number 11?
Your time's expired, Brandon. Wrap it up, please.
Oh, I didn't get to Mr. Stutz. Half a million dollars for this gentleman. He's the only applicant. Is he going to throw us in jail? Consentual?
Is there any more comment on the consent agenda at this time?
I'm not sure. I just would like a point of clarification, if you can help me out here, please. On the regular items, under number 25, when it says, discuss and take action on a motion to suspend, does that mean that the discussion will happen among you guys and there's public comment afterwards, or is there public comment before? I'm just wondering when public comment can be made. Is it during that time, or?
There will be public comment taken when we take up the item.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification.
So if, if the item is voted, if it's, the rules are suspended and we take up that item, that is when the public comment will come in.
Okay, so then are you asking us to make public comment during public comment? Should this not be passed, then? Is that what, is that what you're telling us to do?
You can make your public comments at the...
So it sounds like yes from the public, and...
There, there is a general public comment period at 10:25. It's that timed item, and you can...
Okay, so that's when we do it.
Make your general public comment at that moment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification.
Okay. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for discussion.
So I'd like to pull number, item number 11, just for some separate questions.
Okay.
And a pull number three.
Okay, we have 11 and three.
My only comment is on, on your report on 14, is, is that I would like to have the, that report given in a presentation sometime in the near future, because I feel that it's very critical to our ongoing juvenile justice, not only what has transpired, what were your goals and objectives and what were met, and then what we plan going forward in the next five years. So, thank you.
Seems reasonable for a presentation to be brought.
Does he need consensus for that?
I believe we might have consensus, do we?
Yes.
Yes, we do have consensus, whether we need it or not, I guess. Okay, so consent items minus item three and minus 11. Do we have a motion for approval?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Starkey and a second by Supervisor Howard. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Supervisor Starkey, would you read the proclamation for domestic violence awareness, please?
I will. Thank you for this opportunity to bring this issue to the Board by way of the proclamation. Is someone from the Harrington House present?
Oh, good.
Would you mind? Oh, hi, how are you? In my prior career, many of you might know, that I was a probation officer in Sonoma County, and I spent close to 30 years in that career, holding a variety of different positions within the department. And one of the positions that I held was, I was an intensive domestic violence probation officer. I supervised domestic violence offenders, close to 60 high-risk felony and misdemeanor offenders. So, and I learned a great deal about domestic violence during that time period, including the impacts that it has on families. Victims are at their highest risk of danger when they decide to leave a relationship. And offenders are likely products of abuse from their own childhood, and it's a crisis that's affected all communities, including this one. Following the death of Deputy Eschmal, reports have surfaced that she was a victim of domestic violence, and that's yet to be confirmed. That'll come out through evidence. But it prompted me to really want to make sure that we are highlighting the awareness of domestic violence and how it impacts all sectors of our population. So I do appreciate this opportunity to read this proclamation, and I appreciate the Harrington House being here. Whereas intimate partner violence, IPV, is a preventable public health problem affecting millions in the United States. Nationwide, it is an estimated that one in four women, one in 10 men have been impacted by IPV in the form of stalking, sexual violence, and physical violence. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Whereas according to statewide data, Delnor County Sheriff's Department had 1,288 domestic violence calls for assistance in 2020, and Crescent City PD had 85 domestic violence calls for assistance that same year. Whereas Delnor County has the highest per capita of domestic violence calls for assistance in all of California. Whereas victims of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services, so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas Delnor County has a resource center called the Harrington House, which shelters victims of domestic violence and their children. Whereas the Harrington House staffed 24 hours, 365 days a year, provides a safe shelter, education programming, and helps clients identify resources to make positive changes in their lives. Whereas in 2023, the Harrington House provided over 2,500 shelter nights and over 10,000 meals to persons and family in crisis at the emergency shelter. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Delnor County Board of Supervisors, we do hereby proclaim October 23, as October, as domestic violence awareness went throughout the entire region of Delnor County, passed and adopted on this 24th day of October.
If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to say a few words, and addressing you all as well. First of all, I would like to thank City Council for this proclamation. I want to remind everyone that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that Harrington House, like she just mentioned, is our community's domestic violence shelter and resource center. I'm going to share a few information about what we do here. We are 24/7 hotline and staffed, so you can come in or refer anyone here. Our number is 707-465-3013. I also have cards if anyone wants to see me after. We have survivor groups Mondays at 5:30. We are pet-friendly, and we do serve men, women, and children. Over the years, Delnor County has ranked number one in domestic violence calls per capita in the state of California. That means we serve more calls than Los Angeles and San Francisco, and are bigger cities per capita, and it's been like that for a very long time. We hope that with this proclamation, we can strive to make a difference in Delnor County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Wanting to get through the business of the day. That's on consent, yes, I understand. I'm going to take up, because we only have about four minutes till public comment. I'm going to take up budget transfers at this time. We have four of them. Approve and adopt budget transfer 10-01 in the amount of $175,000 within the public nuisance budget for the inclusion of the 2223 Illegal Disposal Sites Abatement Grant into the Code Enforcement Division's 2324 budget. Item 10-02 for the fiscal year 2324, within the Sheriff's Department budget, in the amount of $550,000 for the acceptance of the COPS grant. Transfer number 10-03 in the amount of $10,240 within the OES and Building Maintenance Budget units to replace the damaged roof in Ruby Van Devener Campground. And 10-04 in the amount of $353,534 within the Roads Department budget unit for emergency repairs to the culvert at Washington Boulevard. Do we have any public comment on the budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Loosen through, Mr. Chairman.
Second that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Moving on to our first government item, item number 21, approve and authorize a step increase to A11, step F, effective September 11th, for the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer, Weights, and Measures, as requested by the Board. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none?
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair short.
Yes. Put me down the agenda. Item 22, direct the Community Development Department to work with Supervisor Starkey and Supervisor Wilson to develop a policy for the use of set-aside county funds for the maintenance and of non-maintained county roads. And two, direct the Community Development Department to return to a future Board of Supervisors meeting to present a proposed policy for consideration by the full Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Starkey or Wilson, did you want to comment on this item?
Well, I just learned about it on Friday afternoon. I had no idea I was being appointed, but I am more than happy to serve and be a part of this. I think that, looking at some of our non-maintained county roads, especially in District 5, I'll be honest, is something that we really need to look at and, and have a solution to fix.
Very good.
This is just a resolution to dollars that had been previously set aside for a good number of years. Our staff has requested and asking for a policy by which this, these funds could be accessed and utilized, because no such policy was put in place when the, when the dollars were first allocated, and this would clarify to staff when this dollars can be used. That's why we're going forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Yeah, Supervisor Starkey, we threw you in because you were the one that were, was instrumental in getting those funds put in the budget, so I appreciate that. Is there any public comment on this item?
Since, not this Board, but some on this Board promised us some infrastructure repairs that have been rather meager over the course of the time that I've lived in this county, and I was wondering that perhaps this is an ideal solution for spending some of the Measure R funding that you got socked away for whatever reason. I'm not exactly sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, bring it back to the Board.
So I would like to throw out, possibly for consideration to, since my district has probably the second most of unmaintained roads, and I have a knowledge of roads, either to be considered to be put on this Board or as an alternate. Just like to throw that into consideration if...
I'm more than happy to forego involvement, if you would like to replace me.
I would love to be on that. That roads interest me.
Absolutely. Abs, if that, if that's okay with the Board, we can make a motion. Can I make a motion?
You very well can.
I will make a motion to the, direct the Community Development
I will make a motion to the direct the Community Development Department, I'm sorry, I wrote all over my iPad here, direct the Community Development Department to work with Supervisor Borges and Supervisor Wilson to develop a policy for the use of the set-aside county funds for the maintenance of the non-maintained county roads, and direct the Community Development Department to return to a future board meeting of supervisors, meeting to present the proposed policy for consideration by the full board.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Very good. We've got a motion by Supervisor Starkey and a second by Supervisor Howard, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
Okay, we have reached the 10:25 hour, it is time for our general public comment section. Members of the public, excuse me, members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to comment on the Bridge Access Program, and I wasn't sure how this was going to go, so thank you for clarifying earlier, I thought I'd be breaking the ice on this. Since it's not on the agenda, unless for fifth vote, I think this is the right time to take public comment on this, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity. When you first discussed it September 26, I was out of town, visiting my mother in Wisconsin, but I was surprised this got pulled from consent and without much explanation. It just doesn't make sense to me why you wouldn't support a program that is free, that provides services to 20, I've been told, 2,200 uninsured residents of this county, and it's not a mandate, it's an option. You're giving your constituents an option to have a vaccine that they possibly couldn't afford otherwise. I also just learned that if you don't do this, according to the Health and Human Services, this county will still have to provide vaccines, and that it could cost you $17,000 to provide the service that you could agree to right now, to take for free. Man, you guys have a hard job, and sometimes things come and go, and you don't have enough time to think about it, and I've learned as an adult that sometimes you make mistakes, and that you can step up and correct those mistakes when that happens, and this is your opportunity to do that. On behalf of a friend of mine who can't be here today, but she's undergoing cancer treatment, as a result of that is immunocompromised, and it reminded me of the larger public health concern when we're talking about vaccinations. The more people that are vaccinated, the less risk there is to people like my friend, who are right now vulnerable to more severe consequences. This could have been adopted on the consent calendar, I know Darren, you commented that if we have to reconsider every issue, it's going to take a lot of time, but sometimes it's going to take more time if you don't do, make the best choice the first time around, and I know there's a lot of people here today that are going to tell you what they think. I hope you really listen to what your constituents are saying. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot at the beginning, and my friend just texted me and said, aren't people supposed to say their names before they speak, and I forgot to do that. My name is Kevin Hendrick, Joey Borges is my supervisor, I live in the 4th District, but I'm a member of this county, and as you do, I know you all do, care about this county, and it turned red, I didn't even notice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Kevin. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, but if you could hold your applause so we could get through this in an orderly fashion, I'd appreciate it. And Kevin, as far as the name goes, we do ask that you identify yourself, but it is not a requirement for speaking in front of the board, so, thank you.
Good morning Supervisors, my name is Leslie Watson, and I live in District 2. At the last meeting, you failed to bring to vote your support for a free COVID vaccine program to administer to 2,200 in uninsured residents of Del Norte County. The Bridge Access Program, I think is what you call it, I urge you to bring it forward and to support this program. First of all, it's free to the county, as I understand it, and will cost you nothing. Also, it gives the uninsured a choice to receive this important vaccine that science and the medical community have shown to be of great benefit, particularly to those who are the most medically vulnerable. Furthermore, since it has proven to be life-saving in many instances, by not providing this program, you are putting the cost burden of treatment onto people who can least afford it, and who frequently are the most medically vulnerable. And you are jeopardizing our local hospital system's ability to care for the sick, as these folks could overwhelm our emergency rooms this fall, especially if these prophylactic vaccines are not given. Most importantly, this is not about whether you agree or disagree with the benefits of the vaccine, nor is it about the fiscal impacts, since the program will not cost the county anything. No, the issue is about allowing freedom of choice, allowing other people to have the opportunity to decide for themselves what is best for their health. By failing to support this program, when you visibly shut down Supervisor Starkey's attempt to bring this forward at the last meeting, and in view of Supervisor Wilson's negative feelings about the efficacy of the vaccine, you are demonstrating to me and to others that you are imposing your own judgments about the vaccine, rather than allowing residents the freedom to make up their own minds. I urge you to bring this up for a vote and to support this program now.
Good morning Supervisors, my name's Dana Gill, and I live in District 2 Supervisor Starkey's district. I'm a mother of a beautiful four-year-old germ factory, and six years ago, I was struggling with chronic illness, and discovered I was dealing with an onslaught of multiple autoimmune diseases as a result of black mold exposure. To this day, my immune system continues to be non-existent, despite my and my doctor's best efforts. I wear obviously a high-quality mask, which my son tries to decorate to make fun, and I work closely with my endocrinologist and nutritionist to stay as healthy as I can, and I stay up to date on my vaccines. That also means that I keep my son up to date on his vaccines, so that he brings as little home to me as possible. His pediatrician has ordered the youngest available vaccine, but it's not yet available to them up in Oregon, which is where his pediatrician is. CVS only offers the vaccine to young children at their Minute Clinics, the closest of which is in San Francisco, and no other pharmacies are offering this vaccine for the smallest of children, which he is still in that age range. Without giving Department of Public Health access to these free vaccines, you are forcing me to take three days off of work, drive him to San Francisco, just to get him vaccinated, so that I can continue to work and contribute to the economy here in Del Norte, and be a loving, caring, providing mother. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Dee Kalmer, and I lost my mom to COVID. She died before the vaccine was developed, early on, and when the vaccine was finally available, all her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, we found incredible solace in receiving that shot. I was a former resident of Siskiyou County, and my husband and I worked there for over 30 years. We retired here to your wonderful Del Norte County about 10 years ago, so we can afford insurance and vaccines, and my family. Please, would you provide that choice of comfort and safety for those grieving the loss of a loved one due to COVID? Give people that choice that can't afford to pay for that vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Barbara Tilson, and I'm not very good at this, but I will try to speak because I care for our community's well-being. The Bridge Access Program doesn't affect me personally at this time in my life, and it's not about pro or anti-vaccine, it's more principle. Give all of the community free access to the vaccine if they so choose. Not all of the uninsured are homeless, many working people are caught in the middle, I know this. I was a young, single mother years ago, and I worked two jobs, neither offered health insurance, and I couldn't afford it on my own. I would have greatly appreciated a program like this, so I'm just asking the board to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you Barb.
Hi, I'm Patricia Black, I'm in Chairman Short's district. He's a good neighbor, and I think he's a good guy who works hard for the community, as I think is true of all of you, and I think perhaps you were just caught off guard the last time when it was pulled from the consent agenda, and you just thought it was going to go by. So this issue is really, really personal to me, as you can tell, I'm over 65. I'm also diabetic, and I was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2020, so I know what it was like to be trying to get healthcare treatment during the pandemic. I remember very clearly 2020, we were getting lists every week of how many people had died. You couldn't get emergency surgery, I mean, you could get emergency, you couldn't get elective surgery, and it was scary to go to the ER. Everybody was draped, and there was good reason for it. And then the vaccines came, and so here we are, whether you believe that was it or not, it's kind of an interesting coincidence that in 2023, I don't even have to wear a mask, I mean, maybe I should, but I don't have to right now, I can go back to church and meet with my other church people, I can go to work and work, I have all those options because people got vaccinated. So yeah, some people still get sick, they get really sick, but how often do we hear about people being in the hospital or being intubated? It's basically not happening. So I think everyone has the right to make their own choice about whether they want to get vaccinated or not, but I think our public health experts tell us that, as a prior speaker said, the more of us that are vaccinated, the safer it is for all of us. That's a public health concern, and that's what you guys are here for, is to work for the common good, for the public good, for public health. So that's my thing to you, what do you choose? Do you choose the picture I gave you of 2020, or do you choose the now-reality of 2023? Thank you.
Thank you Barb.
Hi, yes hello, I'm nervous. I'm Amanda Doctor, this is not my first time at this podium, I got a proclamation here when I was 16-years-old for the work that I did for the county. I would love to tell you what district I live in, but my housing situation isn't stable, it's like a theme. But this is my home, I grew up here, I came in with the prison, and I feel the hurt and confusion of my community, and it's valid. We've got echoes of generations of trauma in this community, and it started with the attempted genocide, and it continued on with the prison complex, and I can speak to that personally. I am a product of the domestic violence that was normalized under this prison system. And I am nervous because I am broken, I am broken because my neurology was damaged, and my neurology was damaged because somebody convinced us all that it's okay to react in violence against your own children when they question you, or when they challenge your reasoning. And so I want to thank you Valerie, and the Harrington House for speaking out of this, and I want to give grace to those who don't understand, but there's a part of me with some righteous rage, because I know children who are suffering under this right now, and I'm a grown-ass adult, I can handle myself, I'm well-versed in this, but I'm sick of seeing my students, and my babies, and my nieces and nephews scared, and I understand why they're scared, because we're all scared, we're all confused. We've been given bad information, we've been given bad programming from manipulative media narratives, and it's harmed us all. And I really hope that you are listening to the women who are speaking their truth right now, because we have been silenced for entirely too long, and I can't help but notice there's an imbalance of perspectives sitting right here, and let's fix that. It's not right-wing, it's not left-wing, it's not red, it's not blue. This is our community, that's a false dichotomy that was created to keep us apart, are we listening? Are we listening? I love this community, please keep listening, and please, for the love of God, women, run for office, I don't care what party you're in, just listen, just talk. And men, please take a seat when it's your turn, because history owes us one. Look at the balance. I know you're trying, and I know that you are harmed by this too, but we can't fix it until we have an equitable balance of perspectives at the table, so please listen. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other general public comment?
Good morning again, and I'm sorry to have to be the adversary here, and I do appreciate everyone's perspective. You know, I'm no doctor, and I don't know what's best, I don't want people telling me what I need to do at every instance, and, you know, I think it speaks to the larger picture, though, of some of the dysfunction of what's going on, like insurance, right, and healthcare, and services for everything, but yet we can't get services, but we're paying for everything, and everything's free, but we don't get any. Freedom, no, no, nothing's free, not even freedom. Now, so I, you know, we don't really know the consequences of COVID, and the ramifications that we imposed, we know had detrimental effects, especially on our community, economically, child development, you know, schooling, so there are some negative aspects of what happened through COVID. So it'd be nice to move on from that and start progressing towards the future, you know, looking back, like the Black Plague, you know, people thought, whoa, that was transmitted through people breathing and, you know, coughing on each other. Not really, right, it was in the insects, so as they quarantined people, as they sent them off to the country, they were spreading it, right, so perspective, insurance, there should be money out there for shots, right, it's not government's responsibility to provide healthcare.
It's literally in the Declaration of Decisions, read it.
It gets in a slippery slope, and when you stop, and why, if, why are people paying for it then? Right?
Ladies and gentlemen, he has the time, I would appreciate it if you would respect his opinions.
Good morning Mike Tompkins, I live here in Crescent City, right nearby Supervisor Short, who's also on a board that I'm serving on, as is Supervisor Wilson, and Valerie Starkey, Supervisor Starkey has been there, I believe Joey Borges, Supervisor Borges has been there, Chris, Supervisor Howard. I know you all, I know you're all working for me, you're doing your best. You haven't really had a chance to talk about this yet in public, as I understand it, correct? I mean, you're still deciding whether to even put it on the agenda, is that correct? Do I get that right? I recommend you do, I recommend you talk about it with us, present, be honest with each other and us, I think you will, I think you're that kind of people. And I deeply respect all of you for your thoughtfulness. thoughtfulness, for your knowledge of how things work, and so I think you'll come to a good decision. But do put it on the agenda. Do talk about it with us. And then I recommend that you go ahead and let us, you know, let this, let the state help us here. Why not? Any good reason why not to let that money come here and be used in an appropriate way for the public good? That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good morning. I'm Chris York. Once upon a time, I was the IT Director for the school district. I've been a teacher. I am not several things. I am not a doctor. I am not a researcher in virology. I am not an immunologist. I don't know what any of those things. I don't have any basis for making decisions about a single one of those things. And I am not going to stand up here and blatantly assert that I have the knowledge or the background to make recommendations to this board and have you make decisions based on my recommendations. In those things, I am an idiot. I understand that I am an idiot. The fact that blatant assertion is being used to make decisions based on no science, based on no fact, based on nothing except an opinion disturbs me deeply. We have a program that is free, that is going to address a known problem, and will give options to people who don't have them. And the fact that we aren't considering, the board is not considering allowing that access, is irrational to me. It offends my, my science teacher background. And at any rate, I could go on and on, but you're bright people. You know what should happen, and I hope that you do so quickly. Thank you.
My name is Candace Tinkler. I'm embarrassed to say I have no idea which of you is my su-- oh, oh, who knew? I guess that's good news. It means I didn't have problems before this. I could probably, and have, go to the website for the CDC and even international websites. As the gentleman before me said, I'm not a scientist or a doctor. I don't even cut my own hair. I know when to leave it to the experts. But I don't think people are swayed by statistics, unfortunately, or maybe facts. But there are some truths, and I just wanted to express that I'm the legacy of people who made tough decisions for the greater good of their community. That includes my grandparents in a mining town called Jerome, Arizona, in the 1920s, who were the only people who allowed the young doctor to give their son, my father, the smallpox vaccination and saved him. So for better or worse, you got me. And I think we owe that. I actually grew up with a young man who had polio, and he was the only one in my class who didn't get that vaccine that I got free. I guess my point is that for the rest of my life, I feel like I'm devoted to making this community a better, safer, happier place for our children. I'm really devoted to that, and I might not agree with everything that you guys agree with, but you wouldn't be sitting here if you didn't agree with me, right? I mean, that's what we're all about. And I just feel so strongly that if we can't offer the safety of this vaccine to all, then we are really falling short of ourselves as a community, because all we're really doing is paving the way, sometimes literally with roads, for a greater world for our children. So please, please reconsider this, this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace.
Hi, my name is Lupita Terris, and I'm a little nervous, too. I've heard everything that everybody has said here, and I think there's a lot of people here that may not speak to this. And I bet we could ask them all to stand and say, please vote to have this put into your budget. Please stand. Oh, thank you so much. I would appreciate-- oh, see there? All we have to do is ask. And you need to know, I know that you have compassion for people who can't afford this insurance. And I want to remind you that I believe there were 38 deaths due to COVID, and that there was-- how many?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three? Okay, that's a lot. I mean, it's just too many to think about. But what I would like to say is that the word COVID seems to bring a political divide, and it should not be a partisan issue. The Vaccine Equity Plan is a requirement through the California Department of Public Health Contract Immunization Access Program, and it expects, and it expects the county to provide 138 doses. This covers only 60% of the VAP-eligible participat-- populations. When VAP is approved, it saves us $17,664. Otherwise, this money comes from the existing public health medical supplies funding. Should this board choose not to approve, you're simply robbing Peter to pay Paul. Some of the faces of those uninsured are hard-working members of this community, and they vote. And others are facing hardships, hardships that are only further complicated by the non-approval of VAP. Choose to make a difference, please, and give people the right to choose whether they want to be vaccinated or not. This is not a partisan issue.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, everybody. Dave Powell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am, this COVID thing has been a mess. It's been a problem. I have loved ones who have died from the COVID disease, but I also have loved ones who have died immediately after getting the vaccine. I am not a fan of the vaccine. I have not taken any of it. I don't, I don't think it's a good choice. But the operative word is choice. And, you know, I missed the last meeting when you guys voted on this, and I am sorry about that. So I'm kind of trying to play catch-up here. I would, like I said, the vaccine is not for me, but it is a choice, and I do believe that it should, that people should have that choice, especially if it's free. So that's my take on things. Thanks.
Any others?
Good morning. My name is Janet Gilbert. There's a saying that a candle loses nothing of its light by lighting another candle. Delnart County loses nothing. There's nothing to lose here by accepting the COVID shots that our residents who can't afford them can receive. Are we really so cruel as to refuse health and help to our citizens and let them make a choice? If I, if I think we are, I'm really wrong about who we are as people. I can't believe that you would determine that for someone else. That's life-threatening. And like everyone else is saying, we've got nothing to lose here. We've got everything to gain. I'm wrong if Delnart County thinks we have something to lose. We would lose our integrity. That's what we would lose, and we would lose our community. So I ask you to really think about this. My, my daughter is an ER doc down in Southern California, and she has been with these people dying before the vaccine was made, thousands of them. It was very difficult. And she herself even then got COVID just because of being with them so much and medicating them. But she had vaccinated herself, and she was sick for five days and then was all better. So I really ask you to let the people choose. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more public comment?
Chair, I have hands raised online.
Well, then let's go with those, then, please.
Susan, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hi. I am Susan Roberts, and I live in District One on Wendell. I wrote a letter to all of supervisors regarding the Bridge Access Program, and the gist of the letter was, "Personal opinion and politics should not dictate the personal medical decision of others." I am fortunate. I'm over 65, and Medicare, our tax dollars, paid my COVID shots, but I had a choice. We all have lost family or friends to COVID, people who made their choices themselves. So please allow other people to make their own choice. And tomorrow morning, when you shave, I challenge you to look in your mirrored eyes and ask yourself, "Did I dictate, bully my opinion on others?" Thank you.
Robert, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, I just wanted to say it's cool to see the public show up so much. The last two meetings, you know, the public's there. They always say, like, you know, moldy things grow, or there's no light and all that, and it looks like all those chairs are filled, and you guys are like the light that's, you know, ensuring that we grow what we want around here. And it's pretty rare you see that kind of turnout. And so that was pretty exciting. And then I just wanted to mention on the budget hearing, I really think the minutes are a little lacking, you know? And I've read, like, the Roberts Rules, and it says, you know, just how you voted, not what you said. But on the budget hearing, like, Chris Howard voted no. And, but we have, like, you know, I'd have to watch the show again to see why. And I don't think I'd really find out why. I'm not sure. But I don't know why, if I remember right. That's what I read, I think, in the triplicate. And yet on the minutes, I did look at the minutes. I didn't see a reason as to why. But just really cool to see the public showing up and filling those seats, and, you know, remember, it's on the agenda to suspend those rules or whatever, so you'll have another chance to speak on it again, you know, the public will. And that's cool. Thank you for your time.
Chair, that's all online.
Thank you. Go ahead. Certainly. If you could come up to the, if you could come up to the mic, because nobody will, nobody will be able to hear you.
Last meeting, the county council said a couple of different times that she was not certain if the failure of, to obtain a second actually meant that the board had considered the motion. And I was wondering if she could report on that.
Thank you for your question. If you'd like to take a stab at that?
I think it's at the direction of the chair. We utilize the Rosenberg Rules, and they're pretty vague with a lot of this stuff. Ultimately, in these kinds of matters, finality is what's most important. The chair has a lot of, is the leader, running the meeting, and the goal is to have finality. So there, it can be seen that inaction of the board is inaction of the board, and that was a vote of no. So proceeding that way is perfectly acceptable and fine.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period on, or close the general public comment period, and seeing we had another time to item. Neela, she--
Chair, Ms. Lopez would like to table her item--
Okay.
--for a future meeting.
All right. We will do that. And then now we will take up item number 25, just to stay on subject, and discuss and take action on a motion to suspend the rules, to allow the board to suspend the rules in order to reconsider Consent Agenda Item 11, the Bridge Access Program from the September 26, 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Before we get into that, Ranelle, there was an assertion by the public that DHHS would go ahead and purchase the COVID vaccination outside of this program and continue the vaccination program. Could you speak to that? Is that true? How does that work?
Yeah, as was mentioned, we have a contract with CDPH in regards to our Immunization Access Program. Within that is our Vaccine Equity Plan, which identifies that we would provide those 138 doses, which is 60% of our state-allocated dosage, our vaccine dosage, to that VAP population. So we would utilize other funding to purchase those vaccines if we're not participating in this program.
So it would continue. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to seek some clarity from County Council about this fourth, fifth piece, or is it, can Supervisor Starkey make the motion, or does it have to be one of the four of the majority that did not move the consent piece forward?
Yeah, council can weigh in, but Rosenberg's is absent on this, so I think she's going to bring it, leave it up to me, if I'm not mistaken. And being there was not a second--
Yeah, I mean, the actual motion is a motion to suspend the rules, so anybody can make that motion.
Okay. So moved, then.
We have a motion to suspend the rules by Supervisor Howard. Is there a second? Second, Matt. We have a second by Supervisor Borges.
I got Supervisor Wilson.
Well, it was kind of a tie, so we'll go Supervisor Wilson.
So are we good with that, or do you want me to--
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify for the minutes.
Okay. Would you pull the vote on that, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, now item number two is taking up Consent Agenda Number 11 from the 26th meeting. Approve and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services, Public Health Officer, and Director of Public Health Nursing to sign the attached participation agreement with CDPH for the Bridge Access Program.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Director Brown to come up? We've had a lot of conversations about this over the last two weeks, and there does need to be some light shed on this that wasn't allowed during the non-discussion. So hoping we could have the discussion in front of everybody today, because it seems as if this piece has fallen on the sole responsibility of the county to administer, and it shouldn't fall solely on the county to administer based on our conversations. Matter of fact, UIHS, the open-door clinic, which we all pay into through the healthcare district, in addition to Salant, has the ability to offer through the BAP program. Is that correct, based on our conversations?
Yes, there are some other eligible VAP providers within the counties, some of those which you mentioned. We reached out to them just to kind of gauge where they're at. To date, none of them are enrolled and participating. They are still considering. They have time to do that. However, the allocations amounts available may change if they don't submit it timely. So CVS is also interested in participating. If you've gone online, it'll show that they're enrolled, but technically, locally, that is not true. They're still working out some administrative, you know, billing issues and things like that. So there are other providers within the community that are eligible and interested in participating, however not yet enrolled.
Yeah. My second question for you has to do with some of the data, at least presented by Supervisor Starkey at the last meeting, specific to the 2,200-- Starkey at the last meeting, specific to the 2,200 uninsured or non-insured individuals in the community, close to 9% of our population that was identified. There seems to be some conflict, and I want to try to better understand that conflict with what CDPH has allocated to us through the 60 or 68% or 138 vaccines wouldn't seem to cover potentially that portion of the population which is identified. So can you explain what's going on there?
Sure, yeah. I mean, if you do the math, they're kind of different, basically separate data points. The US Census Bureau is the resource that we use to identify, I mean, it says our uninsured population, which is that 8.6% or 2,200. The CDPH allocation of 230 doses is what they allocated to us. They didn't explain their methodology, just referenced that it's based on population size. And so even though we would enroll or opt into the program, we're not going to receive 2,200. Well, at this point, they could always change their mind and give us more allocations. But currently, we are only scheduled to receive 230 doses through this program that we need to serve 138 by that equity plan that I mentioned before.
And do we have any data points over the last several years during COVID that would give us some, some idea about the number of insured or uninsured and underinsured that accessed a program?
We didn't track that over the last year, and so it's really hard to gauge, you know, how many individuals in that particular population utilized, getting, or would have been eligible, you know, for this program. So I don't have those data points to be able to provide a comparison of, or an estimation of how many individuals we expect to utilize this program out of that 2,200.
Yeah. So I guess I'll just make a statement, and I really appreciate your time on this, Ranelle. I took an extraordinary amount of it doing some homework, getting to this date. I encourage the same audiences here today, encouraging the county and DHSS to ask us for the dollars to also go to the other taxpaying organizations that you guys provide taxes to, in this case, the Healthcare District, to those elected officials to implement the same program that we have access to, if there are truly 2,200 individuals in our community that don't have access to this COVID vaccine. So it's just not our responsibility, it's everybody's responsibility.
One other thing I do want to highlight is, you know, some of the providers we talked to said that they were just going to utilize other funding to serve this population. So it's not that, you know, that might not be available to them. But like us, they wanted to serve that population, and so they had other funding they could do.
Supervisor Borges?
Why would some of these other agencies not utilize this free money?
I can't speak for them of why they're choosing not to. Most of them were just, you know, shared that they were just in discussions with their leadership, kind of similar to what we're doing now as far as what direction they were going to go.
So there's potentially, so with this adoption, it would provide a little over 200 vaccines? Is that, that's what I got out of that, right?
Yes.
And so then there's potentially 2,000 people that have to find other means?
Potentially.
Okay. Just clarification.
Thank you.
Ranelle, one more. I'm sorry, then you've got another one, too. If we already have a program in place that we would use to purchase and administer vaccines, why are we using another one? Why are we going with the Bridge Access Program rather than the-
Well, it is free to us that we're not having to purchase them, and so we still have like a measure that we try to meet for a certain outcome of how many vaccines we provide. So we're going to do that whether we have to pay for them or not.
Oh, I apologize. It was my impression that the other program was free as well, so-
No.
I apologize.
No, we would use typically like our realignment funding, which is discretionary to-
Gotcha.
-be able to pay for those.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Supervisor Howard?
So there's a couple of different programs, sorry, turn on my mic. There's a couple of different programs that we utilize for vaccination within the community. One's the Vaccine Equity Plan, the other one's the Immunization Access Program. Which one of those are both state mandated programs, or are they contracted, or how do those play out?
Hopefully, I'm not going to butcher this. I may ask Shelby, who can tell you about all the details of that, to really dig down on that question.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Shelby Bonn Sab, Director of Public Health Nursing. To answer your question, Mr. Howard, we have an umbrella program called the Immunization Access Program. And under that Immunization Access Program, we have a contract with CDPH to provide a certain amount of vaccines throughout the year. For COVID in particular, this is to provide 138 vaccines to the BAP population. And under the Immunization Access Program, we'd use the BAP program. That's their mechanism for providing us vaccines. We also provide vaccines using our Vaccine for Children's Program. That is our VFC program, which is another program under the umbrella of our Immunization Access Program. And then we have a third program called the State Flu Program, where we provide flu, free flu vaccines to the community every year. And those all fall under the Immunization Access Program.
And to follow up on that question, I specifically asked for state mandated, but you said contracted, so I'm splitting hairs here, potentially. So is this a mandated program of the state, or is it one that we as board have elected into?
So I am also going to split a couple of pairs, because we do, as public health, have a mandate to figure out what childhood immunizations are necessary and needed in the community and the mechanism for providing them. And with most public health departments, that's utilizing the Vaccine for Children's Program, as well as other Immunization Access Programs. We don't have a mandate specifically to provide the IAP program, it's just the way that we do it.
Interesting. Okay. I just, I needed that to be clear, too, because I think for future conversation, I haven't talked to anybody on the board yet, but I do want to bring back, given some of the situation here in this community, our ability to actually deliver healthcare services here as part of public health, and what role and responsibilities each of the other organizations play in our community to help deliver those pieces of this bigger puzzle of health to everybody here in this community. But it's kind of confusing, and again, Ranelle, I really appreciate your time in helping to unwind this.
Thank you, Shelby and Ranelle. Yeah. I think California did a great job of making that just about as complicated as possible. So barring any more questions, we have a, let's see, we don't have a motion or a second on the table for the item. We already did for-
I'll move to approve.
-suspension of the rules. We have a motion by Supervisor Borges to approve. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
And we have a second by Supervisor Howard. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I just heard Chris give us an additional assignment, so I wanted to make sure I was understanding that. So let's assume you're going to approve this. Yay. And what I heard you say, and my question is, should we also go to, is it possible that Open Door also can get separate money for this? Is it possible that IHS? Okay, there we go. We got our marching orders. Do your job.
Thank you, Kevin. Any public comment period for this item is open, yes.
I just wanted to thank you again for letting us revisit this and hear from our supervisors. I am in one district, but I consider all of you my supervisors, because we are a small community. And you have the opportunity to set an example now for the other boards in our community to do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Norma Williams, and I'm just speaking as a county resident. I could have said a lot of things in two languages, but I won't. The only thing that I can tell you right now, given the fact that you've motioned and seconded to consider this BAP program for the much definitely needy in our community, if you lead, the others will follow. Lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online, Kylie? Okay, I'll close the public comment period for this item and-
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I have just three questions.
It's my understanding that one of the supervisors quote believes that, well, it's not a direct quote, let me paraphrase, that, I believe. So my first question is, what data-based citable evidence do we have in making this decision at all? I can bring evidence-based citable data to you. Can you do that to the voters of the county? Number two, if this is available to the citizens of the county, are we affecting any civil liberties? The gentleman to the back said, "choice." Regardless of your opinion, it's a choice. Are you potentially taking choices away from your voters? And lastly, what is, and I heard a couple of numbers, forgive me for showing up late, what are the fiscal losses to the county? What are the fiscal, and when I say county, I mean your voters. What are the fiscal losses to the voters? So if you can answer the questions, great, but, and more so, I wanted to make sure that your voters heard my concerns.
Thank you. Okay, I will close this public comment period at this time and bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you call the vote, please?
Supervisor Wilson?
Is this on the-
The Bridge Access Program.
No.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
Okay, item number 23, approve and authorize an ad hoc working group consisting of two supervisors in order to develop a county strategy within the sheriff's office, including but not limited to improvements to recruiting and retention, salaries, building location, and jail rehabilitation. We will pause for a second and allow people to leave if you would feel so inclined. Okay, if we could resume the meeting, item number two on, or the second part of item 23 is pursuant to Rule 18 of the Administration Manual, direct county administration, auditor, office, staff, and county council to attend and provide staff support for the working group. And three, appoint Supervisor Starkey and Supervisor Wilson to the ad hoc working group, as requested by Supervisor Starkey, Supervisor Wilson, and Sheriff Scott. Hope we can get through this with the absence of Sheriff Scott, obviously knowing what's going on today.
So I have some concerns with this item. In particular, the sheriff's department budget, for quite some period of time since I've been in this county, has always been problematic for having enough funding to go around. We've, we've made actions as a board to let the public consider, through Measure R, additional funding resources that would focus on a lot of these issues. In my opinion, having a subcommittee that doesn't allow for this discussion to continue in the open, but in this case, provides that subcommittee an opportunity to maybe feel some things out and then bring them back in the open, I'd actually like the public to see a full revealing about how this board deliberates specifically on allocating budget items to the sheriff, and utilizes some of those monies which voters voted for to shore up what we are now seeing as a public in the jail and the rehab, to address all the concerns openly and transparently instead of in a committee. So that's my concern. I understand the importance of committees sometimes and not bogging down our meetings, but in this case, public safety, in particular with the sheriff's department, I think is important enough, and the community's invested enough through our tax dollars, that this should be seen in the open and not necessarily in committee at the last minute, once some recommendations are provided. But that's just my thoughts.
Thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for your thoughts, Supervisor Howard. Any other discussion amongst supervisors?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Supervisor Starkey.
And I can appreciate that. A lot of times what happens in these bigger issues, and this is a big elephant that we got to eat, right? And you got to chew it one bite at a time. And, and I think smaller subgroups to kind of flush out the ideas that probably won't work, because we don't have the budget or the community buy-in. Certainly, I do agree that you should be privy to all the decisions, and that's what would come back before the board. And if, if it would make you more comfortable, we certainly could even present the ones that were kind of tabled or not considered as doable. This has come to us from supervisors, or from Sheriff Scott, wanting to really have a working group that can get in there and identify ways in which we can improve the sheriff's department, and help him do a better job to be the most amazing sheriff that he can be, which he already is, in my opinion. But it's how the board can support that. So I think a smaller group that allows for that, to get in there, to dig very deep, and then come back and present it to the larger board, is appropriate. And you all know that I like to report out, and I certainly commit to you to report out on every meeting that we have, and kind of talk about the directions that we're going, and keep you in the loop in that way.
Thank you, Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, my point on this is, is that twofold. One is, for far too long, there's been a division between the elected officials and the board, and the needs often go unaddressed and unsaid, that the problems that are endemic right now with the sheriff's office are not new. Many of them have been going on since when I was a sheriff and have just continued on. The needs are such that they are not going to be met any academic, any calendar year within any one budget, but have to be looked at as a long-term strategy and goal towards meeting of certain objectives. Those objectives are what hopefully this ad hoc committee will do in sitting down with the elected, and coming up with hopefully a uniform agreement between what is truly needed to go forward with a repairing and replenishing the resources over a long-term goal and objectives with the sheriff, and having his buy-in and his outreach to the board, I think is positive, because those kinds of things had not existed prior, and that in order to repair this, it is necessary. So, you know, I, I think this is just basically making the sausage, coming up with concepts and ideas of how we can accomplish that, will have to come back to the board. But a lot of these things are, you know, as an elected, he doesn't need to reach out this way, but he is. And I feel that, you know, as a part of the board, we can support him in trying to meet those needs to help the sheriff repair what has been long overdue.
Very good. Anything, Supervisor Borges?
I mean, at this time, without Sheriff Scott here, which obviously, I know he couldn't be here, but I'd like to hear his input on this, to see if, you know, his real buy-in on having a subcommittee. So without him here, I don't really feel comfortable approving.
Just to assure you, he helped write the report. But I understand.
Supervisor-
My conversations-
I can confirm that as well.
Yeah, my conversations with the sheriff have been long-going, even before he was sheriff, and this, and that this is his desire, not my, our desire. And we're just trying to be facilitative.
Well, I guess, and this is going back to prior to our, our June budget hearings, but it wasn't too long ago, we all argued that everybody needs to see how the sausage is being made, and that transparency needs to take place. This would do just the opposite of what certain folks on this bench argued for. And so we're either going to bring it forward to the public and show them how the sausage is made, and hatch it out up here in front of everybody, or we're going to potentially lose some options that the public could have and weigh input on, up here for them to hear, too. But maybe this is the best way to approach it, but curious.
If I'm getting a trade here for an open budget hearings, for us to bring this before the board, I'll take it, you know, because I've, I've wanted open budget hearings for a long time.
This is specifically on the sheriff's budget, which is extremely problematic to the county, as 70-plus percent of our general fund already goes into the public safety piece of this equation. Sheriff Wilson is obviously quite experienced with this, and I do trust his ability to get in there and dive deep with Sheriff Scott. I guess- I guess my concern is, at this point, is why can't we have this, which has always plagued us and we've gone out to the public to ask for additional funds in the form of Measure R, which would help backfill this public safety disaster that we have hitting us? Why can't we have this in public? But that's where I'm at, but I've said my piece.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
I find it interesting that this board has decided to piecemeal out government again. It seems like a common practice here in this, you know, in this board. I mean, I've been to a couple of these meetings and it disturbs me that when you piecemeal government out in such a broad fashion, somehow it never gets back to the whole concept of whether or not it actually benefits the community, whether or not the community actually has any options to weigh in on whether this is valuable in any segment of the, of the whole process. I mean, typically, when I come to these board meetings, and I've been to one or two, the public is far outweighed by the number of employees of the county. I mean, we very rarely see the kind of consideration we had over this previous issue. I mean, I can recall when we discussed the tri-agency issue, a significant portion of the community came out and decided that this shouldn't be a part of this community, yet the board went ahead and reconstituted the tri-agency. I mean, we're getting to the point where, you know, who's running this county? It certainly doesn't appear like the five of you are. You parcel out your leadership roles indiscriminately to small groups and get overrun by the public who are basically virtue signaling over a program that, I mean, when I spent some time in my doctor's office following the 26th meeting of September, he was all up in arms about the bridge program. Yet, here we are, three meetings later, and where are we at? I mean, I tried to explain to him at that point that there were other options other than the bridge program, but yet, here we are back to putting the bridge program in place. I mean, I don't know what you guys are doing up here. It certainly isn't, in any sense, government or leadership or, I mean, Supervisor Howard, I agree with. I mean, it should be something that takes place in front of the public, this idea that the sheriff's department is a disaster, a basket case. We need to know what you're doing. And we certainly aren't gonna find out when you have two people off in a little room with three or four others talking about what the sheriff needs, because pretty obviously, he needs a lot, a lot more than you're giving him. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Lynda Lamar. And I decided to stay and listen to a little bit more of the meeting. It's been a while since I've been attending these meetings. And I respect all of you on the board because you've put yourselves out there to help our community, you know? And I'm really, I'm interested in what Chris said. I think it is good to put things out to the community, but I also think what Valerie said was valid, more open budget hearings. I don't remember when that happened or when the change occurred that we didn't have them. I mean, I haven't, like I said, I haven't been coming to the meetings for a while, but you know, when you have those open budget hearings, you hear more from your constituents on how you want, how they want you to lead, you know? And I think the more we are cohesive in those types of things, it's gonna make the community del north strong. So I wanna encourage you to reconsider doing more open budget hearings. And I think Chris is right on about this for the sheriff's department also. Thank you.
Well, Sam, Lynda, good job. Yeah, good to see the community out and I just want to implore you once again to find your influence, right? There's no two better people to come up with an action plan than Mr. Wilson and Mr. Scott, right? So we elected you to do it. Go do your job and tell us what they need. Tell us what you needed and didn't get, right? There's money there. So, find your influence. You can, you can come up with it. And for Mr. Howard, I mean, yes, transparency and those are good things, budgets, you know, but how come we don't hear much about the True North group? Is that right? Or how many ad hocks are you on that we don't hear about? And that's the problem, that we do see a lot of ad hocks and committees that don't meet, right? Your committee list has how many committees on there? Thirty? Yet, there's nothing on the calendar. I don't know. So yes, just needs help. And I was wondering if we, what we expect the projected inmate population at the jail to be, if there's anywhere else in the county that we might be able to use. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dave Palligan, just a small comment. The, you know, we did a proclamation today for domestic violence and my understanding is that the sheriff's department are the ones that really are the face of whatever reason or to those domestic violence situations. And so, I think, you know, let's put our money and our effort where our mouth is. Don't just do a proclamation, but let's do something.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any, anybody online, Kylie? Okay, I'll close the public comment period for this item and bring it back to the board for further discussion. Supervisor Starkey?
I would just inquire with Supervisor Howard, what does this look like for you? Would you want a workshop? What is it that you're hoping in order to, because it's gonna be a lot of information and we were hoping to narrow it down a little bit before it came to the board. So what would your hope be?
I don't want it narrowed down before it came to the board. I guess I want to hear exactly what you guys are hearing from Sheriff Scott.
Okay. So like a workshop?
Because if we're gonna really be investing dollars that we potentially don't have out of the general fund, I would like all the options laid out here in front of us, all five of us.
Okay. Why, yeah, okay. I mean, I suppose we could.
Because obviously, we've got quite a large jail project that is vastly underfunded to do what we need to do. I don't know how to mince out dollars we don't have, so I'm, and I guess it comes back to, we really need the community to understand the problem that we have with public safety and funding public safety here in our community.
So, if I could just ask another, like procedurally, would you like for Sheriff Scott at some point to show a presentation about staffing and then a presentation about repairs? Is that sort of what you're kind of hoping for so that we all can hear and weigh in?
Everybody should be educated on this issue at once.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be a separate workshop, it could be right in our board meetings.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking. It's just one opinion.
No, it's fair enough. And with that, I think that I'm willing to ask that this maybe be tabled until the next meeting so that we can kind of regather those thoughts and talk with Sheriff Scott when he has a little bit more time, he's been incredibly busy, and see if that's something that he would be willing to pivot and work with, if that's acceptable, is to table this.
Okay, we've got, I don't know, there's a motion to table by Supervisor Starkey, but I would just like to make a couple of comments myself, having been on one of the ad hoc committees and seeing some successes with that, I can kind of see where Supervisor Starkey is going when we're talking about doing things like improvements to recruiting and retention. Seems like to me that there would be a small group talking about strategies of what works, what, you know, reach out to other law enforcement agencies, that kind of thing too. And that would be kind of, in my mind, a small group discussion, looking at maybe, possibly alternate building locations, who knows? I mean, that's just a discussion, maybe it would come to fruition, maybe it wouldn't. But I would think that hashing out the different possibilities would be another small group thing and then bring it back to the board and say, "These are the options we went through. We want to know what your, what your viewpoints are." Jail rehabilitation, I agree that that is kind of first and foremost on our, on our minds when it comes to big budget items. But I think hashing out some funding possibilities, maybe some, you know, some ideas of looking for grants or something like that would be a small group discussion and then bring it to the larger group. I mean, the homeless ad hoc that I am currently on has a big group and we have, you know, splintered out to kind of specialist kind of subgroups that, that I think are very effective. But I would certainly like to hear Sheriff Scott's opinion on this as well. So I guess we will see where this goes. We do have a motion to table until Sheriff Scott can be present. Is there a second?
So I, just a quick comment. I definitely agree with Supervisor Howard on having this discussion, you know, more of an open discussion, but I don't think that a presentation is the answer because, you know, they're nice to watch, but after those, there's usually not much discussion or decisions or diving deep into the information. So I don't know what the right answer is, so at this time, I will second the motion to table it until maybe a little more clarification from Sheriff Scott and maybe a better, a different plan or maybe the original plan, I don't know. But at this time, I second the table.
Yeah. My problem on this is that I know too much and I've dealt with this, lived it, understand it, understand wholeheartedly what some of the issues that Sheriff Scott is going through. Also, much of what needs to be addressed at the sheriff's department truly will have nothing to do with the board, nor any board action required, because it is internal policy and procedure that needs to be kind of overlooked, readdressed, re-looked at to see if we can move in a positive direction organizationally and structurally internally. He reached out to us to help not only in the areas where it will be and should probably would be better having an open public hearing and meeting, especially when you're talking about long-term. You know, we haven't, we know just by estimations, a nine-plus million dollar rehab of the jail is what was recommended. And we know that we are sorely lacking in the revenues that can address the needs. And so, you know, what we were looking at as an ad hoc is determining how we would progress through, where we have potential funding possibilities that may exist and are unknown at this point in time in some cases. But looking at how and what we could come back as recommendations due to priorities, looking primarily at public, at safety of staff as well as safety of the inmates and the utilization of what funds we do have and how best to address it and prioritize the process by which we have to go through. Those kinds of things, I think, are very valid to bring back because they are dealing with dollars and cents, they are dealing, let's say, with personnel restructuring. Those kinds of things are definitely board actions that would require board, but many of the things that we are discussing with Sheriff Scott are things that are purely internal, purely within his control and privy as sheriff and as an elected. He's just reaching out, asking for some input.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to table. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, I vote favor in a tabling until Scott, Sheriff Scott can respond.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes.
Keep moving up on that, adjourn time. Neil, do we, which is, is the final grand jury report pressing as far as time goes? It is? Okay, we'll take up that item, this item 24, review and discuss in accordance with Penal Code Section 933, the findings and recommendations within the 2022-23 final grand jury report requiring response from the governing body. Neil, would you like to take that up?
Yeah, sure. I provided the response that I drafted from the board supervisors to the presiding judge of the Superior Court as required by Penal Code 933. Are there any questions or input from the board?
No, good job, Neil.
Very good. Any other question?
No, I just think it underscores the need to have that ad hoc looking at the sheriff's department because of the grand jury report, but I thought you did a fine job. Thank you.
And again, that's exactly why I think the public needs to know what's going on. Generally, they pay more attention to us than the grand jury.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this item? Anybody online, Kylie? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Motion would be in order?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Supervisor Howard and a second by Supervisor Wilson. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short?
Yes. Okay, item number 26, "Consideration of the request from the tri-agency Economic Development Authority to waive the fees incurred for services previously provided by county council as requested by the chair of the tri-agency Economic Development Authority." Is there any public comment on this item?
So the public's gonna have to continue to front the cost of the tri-agency, which, like I recorded earlier, was opposed by nearly everybody in the audience when the vote to continue the tri-agency was affected. When are we gonna stop funding the tri-agency and why is it so vitally important when you had a group of people like you had today and you totally ignored them? So, today, all of a sudden, the group that came before you tugged on the heartstrings and got what they wanted out of you, I guess. I find it interesting, the flip-flop nature of the board when it comes to what is best for the public and what is not. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Try. Be a good name for the board if we wanted to rename it. Hopefully, we do more than that when it comes to domestic violence. Take a moment of silence until the meeting is adjourned.
I have been directed in the past that these minutes are theirs to take up however they want, but I completely disagree with just standing there in silence and wasting everybody's time. So I appreciate you leaving the podium. Bring, I'll close public comment at this time and bring it back to the board for consideration. If there's any further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What I'm confused about is that this is a decade worth of attorney fees and it's only $8,856. That seems awfully low. Was that split between the three members?
It was not a decade's worth of attorney fees. It was a decade's worth of work that the tri-agency, up until the time it had money but used it to pay off USDA, used some of those dollars to continue paying county council. However, the bank account currently is quite low, almost nonexistent, because we currently have not funded tri-agency at this time, even though the member agencies-
If I can clarify, we continue to invoice tri-agency until, I think it was first quarter of '21. That's when they ran out of money. Really out of money. And so, the $8,000 and change is just since then. And $2,500 of it is, was actually an invoice to Joel Bezz and Hartwig for a financial statement. So it really is only about $6,000 of the work.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thanks Joel.
Any other questions or comments from the Board?
No. I mean, I've been open already that I don't agree with us paying more than everyone else. County always foots the bill, it seems like. And so with this, it's solely on our shoulders, is there anybody else willing to kick in? How does that play out?
We hadn't asked because the work was already completed by our County Council, who represented the tri-agency for quite some period of time, at both an administrative level and through advice. So this is a way to clear it up.
So, so this has already been provided? What happens if we don't?
The dollars that are in there right now have been, the $10,000 or $11,000 are the ones that have been kicked in by the Harbor and solely by the Harbor at this time. So, the only one left at this point in time would be the county and the city. The county kicks in right now, that would pretty much bring it to even, other than the city contribution that is waiting for ours.
Okay, a motion would be appropriate.
What do you mean, bring it to even? Bring it the $8,000?
A third, a third, a third.
So we'd all pay?
On this payment.
$8,000?
But the city's paying all of it right now if, if we don't do anything.
And this is just a-
Or we could pay all of it right now.
Right? This is just an in-kind donation.
Yeah, but we'd like to leave some money in the checkbook at this point in time to continue to operate as was voted upon here last month.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'd make the motion.
Got a motion by Supervisor Sir Howard to waive the fees and seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Kylie, will you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Starkey?
No.
Supervisor Borges?
No.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Short.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we are going to adjourn this meeting. We will be taking up the two items that were pulled from the consent agenda, item number 27 and item number 32 at next meeting on November 7th, 2023. Thank you.